I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Peters Township Planning Commission for September 12th, 2024. Roll call?
Mr. Waldinger.
Here.
Ms. Corable.
Here.
Mr. Magreenow.
Here.
Mr. Slepis.
Here.
Mr. Mills and Mr. Wiley and Mr. Carter Phillips are not able to attend tonight.
Very good. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the August 8th, 2024 regular meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the August 8th, 2024 regular meeting minutes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Any public comment on items not on the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on to old business, starting with Tuscany II Plan of Lots subdivision number two. Mr. Sutter.
All right. As you may recall, the Planning Commission first considered this matter at the August 8th meeting. The request was tabled for several reasons. First, to allow staff to conduct research into the origin and intent of the orchard buffer. Also, to allow the applicant to revise the plan to address outstanding technical comments. And finally, to allow the applicant to provide clarity regarding where and how proposed lot 219 will be accessed from Just About Road. Very briefly, the property was recently vacant, but preparatory site work and build-out of the Tuscany II development has recently begun. The applicant is proposing what is essentially an amendment to the approved development plan. This proposal would create the previously mentioned proposed lot 219 out of existing open space D and would extinguish an existing 100-foot temporary orchard buffer. Since the plan was considered last month, the adjacent property owner, Bob Simmons, has withdrawn his complaint regarding the proposed removal of the orchard buffer. The applicant has also provided a grading plan for the proposed lot and for the development as a whole. You can see the grading for the proposed lot on the screen there. The plan has also been revised to show a more robust open space calculation that has allowed staff to determine that the plan will remain in compliance with those requirements of the CR overlay district. There are several outstanding issues that remain, though none of them are barriers to providing a recommendation tonight in the opinion of staff. First is the need for the applicant to obtain an amendment to their existing MPDES permit from the Washington County Conservation District. Second is the need for a highway occupancy permit for lot 219 from Pendott. Also, a 20-foot waterway easement will need to be shown centered on the unnamed tributary of Brush Run traversing the northwestern corner of the lot, as well as the wetlands that are present on the lot. Staff is of the opinion that the Planning Commission may recommend approval of the plan, subject to those five conditions noted on the screen.
Would the applicant like to provide any additional information? Your name, sir?
My name's Stephen Victor from Victor Wetzel Associates. I'm also here with Mark Hoskins, the developer. And I think Jim has done an excellent job in explaining this proposal, and we are in agreement with the conditions that he wants to suggest as part of your recommendation. And if I really don't have anything else to add, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Sutter, the orchard buffer, could you explain that I was not at the August 8th meeting?
Of course. The original Tuscany II development had a 100-foot orchard buffer that was nego-- it's in that green there on the overview of the plan there. That kind of originated out of conversation between the developer and the township as part-- because council has expressed a desire to protect the existing peach orchards on Simmons Farm. There are apparently Department of Agriculture regulations that prevent 100-- prevent having those within 100 feet of an occupied dwelling. I was directed by the Planning Commission at the last meet to kind of research the origin and intent of that buffer. During that intervening time, though, Mr. Simmons has dropped his complaint regarding the buffer. We've received confirmation in writing and verbally from Mr. Simmons that he would like to withdraw that complaint.
So the buffer still exists per the Department of Agriculture regulations. It's just that Mr. Simmons no longer wants it to be enforced, or?
He has dropped his complaint over it not be-- over it being removed.
He's dropped his objection.
Objection, yes.
Victor, you probably have more information.
Yes. When we were here for the preliminary plan approval, Mr. Simmons showed up at the last minute and said, oops, there needs to be a 100-foot buffer. What he incorrectly stated was, he needs to be 100 feet from us, not we have to give him 100 feet under the federal regulations in anticipation that somebody who has an orchard will be spraying insecticides or other whatever they may do to the maintenance of it. We didn't check to verify his statement at the time of the preliminary plan. We said, okay, as long as your orchard's there, if the federal regulation is, we'll put a 100-foot buffer. We did. Well, we found out later that that was incorrect. Had the discussion with Mr. Simmons. He agrees that it is incorrect, and so it is the farmer who must stay 100 feet from us, not we 100 feet from him.
I'm unfamiliar with this regulation, so I'm looking for guidance if that is the case.
It's also not a township regulation. Yeah. It's a Department of Agricultural--
Sure.
And I'm not sure if it's really-- it's imposed upon the farmer. It's really not imposed on the development community, so that's why none of us, I think, in the development community, we were never aware of it.
It seems reasonable that it would be hard, it would almost be a taking if I planted an orchard up to my property line and it would extend over. So I can see that logic.
Right.
I'm just trying to make sure that this board, this commission is not running afoul of something we should not understand.
No.
I think the issue that would be, to give Simmons Farm a little credit, they were the argument was, we've been here, we've been here first. You know what I mean? And these trees have been planted here, these peach trees have been here for, I mean, ever in the, you know what I mean, not ever, ever, but as long as they were there, this was undeveloped ground. Now they're developing it. Is he required to stop farming that area because now there's a development there? That was part of the discussions about--
Yes.
Right. Well, and yeah, I never researched the Department of Agriculture. I don't, I don't know whether, you know, I just, I don't know who's reading them. This is correct, because I've never looked it up.
Maybe I could give you another example of where these setbacks are imposed. Marcellus wells are required currently to have a 500-foot setback from any residential structures. However, once that well is in place, you can build your house as close as you want to that. The 500 feet is not imposed on you, it's imposed on them who are operating the business that is considered to be a problem. And so this is a very similar use of that regulation that we can build as close as we want, people can buy houses as close as they want. It's if the farmer starts a new transaction, he must stay away. So we don't stop him from spraying.
So his peach trees are going to stay where they are until they've reached their life cycle?
Yes.
And if you sell, or when you sell that lot, you'll probably have to disclose to the potential prospective buyer, hey, there's a peach orchard here. They may spray.
Correct.
Hopefully, the wind's not coming your way, and it's going the other way on the days they spray.
I have some things to add. Go ahead, Mike. Please, come on up.
Yeah, just before you start, just, you know, kind of what I'm trying to think here is that is there a scenario here, based upon your reading, it's on Mr. Simmons not to do anything within 100-foot buffer, not up to you not to build there? Is there a scenario here where if, again, I don't know the basis for the withdrawal, right? We don't know why he's withdrawn his objection. Is there a situation here where, you know, somebody buys a house, they're, you know, they're within the background, he's got his peach trees, he sprays, and then they come to the township and complain and say that they want some sort of, they want to, they want, they want that stopped, and where then we would then have to say, okay, well, you can't spray anymore? I guess I'm just a little concerned on what basis Mr. Simmons has withdrawn his objection.
So my name is Mark Hoskins. I'm the developer. There's really a little bit more to it than that. So if you look at the, these trees were only put in not forever, about six or seven years ago, and are about halfway through their life. But if you look right here, when the Simmons planted these trees, they went onto someone else's property that they didn't have it surveyed. So they had trees all up through here. They're no longer there, but they even harvested these. I let them harvest it, right? But their trees now are really kind of back here. They took a bunch of them out. And then obviously, we had to take down what was on our side. Now, according to Scott Simmons and Dave Simmons and Cindy Simmons, they don't use spray, they use granular on peaches, they spray on apples. I think it has something to do with the skins, you know, absorbing chemicals in a different way. So what they do is they actually commit to put granular down, but it doesn't stop them from farming. But how it all happened is they had come onto someone else's property without permission, never got it surveyed, and they were way into someone else's property. And now they realized that that was wrong.
Well, it sounds like then we really don't have a spray issue here. And the granular, if they put it down, is on their property and therefore it's their--
I've never farmed a day in my life, granular spray. I have no idea. I'm just trying to figure out if that buffer is going to put this commission--
And if that's true, if it's softs that bad, we shouldn't be eating it, right? So we've got to kind of look at that part of it, too, because if you look at the whole rest of the Simmons Farm, especially near Windermere, they're spraying within 50 feet of those houses on that whole street.
I'm just trying to understand is this commission, if there's an issue by approving it, if there's an issue that we're creating, that's my concern.
So Jim, can you speak to the comments on the first page here mentioning that you don't believe that a plan that removes the buffer will be approved by council?
That's based on information I had prior to Mr. Simmons withdrawing his complaint, his objection.
So now that he's withdrawn, what is the position do you think that council--
I don't think council would have an issue approving the plan at this point. They expressed their, I'm not, I don't want to speak for council, of course, or presume anything that they, any actions they would take. However, based on my research into the origins of this, they expressed a desire to protect Mr. Simmons' operations.
Right.
Mr. Simmons no longer has an objection. It sounds to me, although I don't know the origin of him withdrawing, it sounds like he has no objection or issue, continues operations, therefore council should, in theory, not have an objection to the removal of it.
And then I just want to be, I'm just going back again to the notes we're talking about, that Mr. Simmons stated that the Department of Agriculture forbids all agriculture activities within 100 feet of the occupied dwelling. So again, just putting on, like, I've not done any research on this, but your, your understanding is not even all agriculture, it was spraying. And I understand that you have the reverse position, that it's their burden, not yours. But you think that even the requirement of it is limited to spraying, not all agricultural activities?
No, that was my error. I think that just any insecticide, pesticide that you're going to use is supposed to do it. I was not aware that he's using granular versus the other. I don't know how, you know--
But that's pesticide, it's what you're saying.
But it doesn't go through the air, the same.
Right. But if there's not a distinction in the Department of Agricultural Regulations between spraying and granular, then that's a distinction, that's a difference.
There's nowhere else in Peters that there's a restriction like this. Not a, not a, not a community, not anywhere in Peters. This has never been imposed on anybody.
Is it recorded on the documented recording?
It's on the recorded plan, yes.
It has nothing to do with lot 219?
No. 219 is a second, separate issue. And by doing the re-subdivision, we are basically removing the 100-foot.
If I can help on that with those, the lot 219, it always existed. But when Paul wanted to widen that road, although the state didn't, Paul wanted to take out some of that curve, they never knew how much land they needed. So that's why that, that lot was always there from day one. When Steve did the original design, that lot was there. So now we're just putting it back, and we're also giving the township several acres so that they can eventually, if they wanted to take the curve out of the shrub, so we gave them all this land here that you see, all the way up through here, and we gave them an extra eight and a half, eight and a half or 10 feet of land all the way up to the end of our property. So if Just About ever got widened, you know, we're giving it to them on the other side also. They don't have to ask for land or try to take land. Now, we're, I have the only development that gives the township the ability to do that, none of the rest of these do. But from the start of my property here on Just About, all the way down, we have given that land to the township so that they can do anything where they want, widen the road or changing the curvature or anything. We've already moved a bunch of dirt for them. We've already done the preliminary, their engineering, so that when they're ready to do it, they save a lot of money on it.
From what I'm looking at, the four staff recommendations, it's a highway occupancy permit, it's revised grading plan that incorporates the entire Tuscany II development.
But it's only particular to that lot. Although they called the whole thing, it's only that lot. There's no--
So there's no other revised grading?
They provided what I asked for in that.
And what, we were just looking to see a comprehensive look at grading.
Right, with the whole thing. Comprehensive meaning with that changed and all in one big play, is what they were trying to achieve. And that's what we did.
So what it's ended up is just these--
I was going to say, yeah, it's these five of our current recommendations, not the ones that are providing the memo. We've received updated plans since that memo was sent.
And you have no problem with these five?
No, they were actually what we would have done anyhow. It's kind of like, they called it out to put it in writing, but it's like the normal that you would want to do to be, obviously, you've got to show your wetlands, you can't be grading in the wetlands. And that's just all common sense. But, you know, thankfully, you know, the staff takes the time to put it like this so that it's spelled out, so there's no discommunication.
And these are fairly straightforward.
Yeah.
Yes.
The only thing that's tripping me is the, is the buffer easement. I don't know, I'm not sure on that one.
Jim, can I, so I'm reading the email itself, and you did not have any subsequent discussions with Mr. Simmons about that?
Paul Lauer, township manager, did have a discussion with him about that.
Okay. Because I'm just reading, it says, hi Jim, I'm dropping my complaint about the 100-foot temporary buffer on the Tuscany II plan. I still hope the regular ag buffer still goes in.
That's the buffer area, that's 25 feet. That was approved as part of the final plan.
We're 100% on board with that.
That buffer still is--
Yeah, I did that in phase one. I did it in Hamlet, or excuse me. It's been so long, Windermere is 19 years ago. I'm getting old. Last time I was in here, I was 40. But, yeah, so we're doing all that.
To be clear, this is a recommendation to council.
Correct.
So does the updated plan show the 25 foot still being put in in lieu of the 100?
Yeah.
Yes.
And we were, we actually did ask for that. We said, hey, let's keep at least the 20 foot like the rest of the town.
25.
25, yeah. And we're, the house that we would put there is pretty far this way anyhow, but it just, it hurts you from doing any width. But if you'll get that buffer compared to where there's actually trees, now the trees are all gone. They're not there anymore.
I mean, think that the five, the recommendations are what we foresee as being in issue. It seems like the September 4th, was it, I'm sorry, the September 4th, 2024 letter, I don't know that I have that. Is that substantial in nature? Or is that already taken care of? It's not the fifth amendment?
I'm not, I'm not sure what you're speaking to.
So in the, in the credentials that we have--
Uh huh.
It mentions four conditions, and the fourth one is every other comment from the September 4th letter. So is that still--
I'm assuming, oh, that, that comment letter, they've addressed, they've--
Yeah.
They've addressed, I mean, I'm, it's anything that's up there.
So this is the remaining comments that staff--
Yes.
And any other engineers have had on, there's no other engineer comments.
Correct. Like, for example, the address for proposed lot 219, that was present in that letter, and that's just something we have on that, that has been--
And we've already been through the Washington County Conservation District, they said a couple of comments, believe it or not, were the same as what your people come up with. So they're doing a good job, like, they kind of told us what they needed, which we do to begin with, so. Thank you very much.
I don't know if we put another condition with six about this buffer, because I just, I just don't have enough background information to make an educated decision on it. I think otherwise, the plan seems really straightforward. That's my opinion.
Well, the thing is, it's a plan that's already around, it's an amendment. And so, you know, we're talking about, and I think one of the questions has to be, is there a reason to amend, right? And what are we, what's the purpose of amending? So that, that's just where I'm struggling a little bit here, because I understand your reading of it and looking at it, but, you know, two minds can differ, and I don't know upon what basis Mr. Simmons, because I wasn't there for the conversations, on what basis he--
I believe he originally said--
On what basis he withdrew it, that's what I'm asking.
The reason he asked, he originally told her one was a DEP requirement, it's not a DEP requirement.
Well, he knew it was, sorry to interrupt, but he knew that it was agriculture last time he spoke to him.
Right.
So there's really not a confusion there.
Right. But the agricultural says the farm side has to be 100 feet away. So this isn't something that's been there for 50 years. These are trees he put in on someone else's property.
Well, not--
Not all.
Not, not all of them. You said the ones he put on--
No, but what was--
The ones he put on other people's property are gone now.
Right.
Yes.
So we're only addressing the ones that are still there.
Correct. And the, the whole problem was created by Mr. Simons, Simmons, when he originally came several years ago and said, here's the DEP regulation, and he was wrong. He's now atoning for his sins, err or lie. Depends on how you want to put it. And so for, this really is a non-issue. And I think staff recognizes that.
And it's also made the lot unbuildable. It's a beautiful lot, but it's kind of unbuildable unless, I mean, unless I put something that's like a, an Arab farmhouse on it, right?
And we, we've not asked our solicitor about this, I wouldn't think, at this point.
He will see it when we go to council.
That's, that's my hope, is won't be apprised of it.
I'm sure staff, having heard you, will do so.
Any other questions from the audience? Mr. Simmons? With that, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that the Tuscany II Plan of Lots subdivision number two be approved, subject to the five recommendations outlined in staff's, as shown on the screen. It's not in your memo.
It's on, as shown on the screen.
On the screen.
And add something with the 25-foot setback?
I make a shift.
You can second an amendment, you can amend one second, I guess, right? What's the 25-foot setback? I might have missed that.
It's there on the plan.
Instead of it being 100 setback, it'd be a 25-foot setback, just making--
Which is a requirement of designing over this.
Which is standard, it doesn't need to be--
Whether, whether he's farming or not, because we're a conservation subdivision, that it had to be.
So dropping the 100 still make, you must still comply with the 25--
That buffer area is going in regardless.
It doesn't go to zero because of 25. Does it make sense?
It does.
And that was actually something we suggested, requested, hey, we should at least leave what's there.
And since it's an offer, it's being indicated an offer, I just think it'd be clear, just to put it in as a condition, just so it's clear when it goes up to council, because I'm not here today.
I will modify my recommendation to include a sixth recommendation, that the 25-foot buffer be incorporated.
Okay. I'll second.
It already is incorporated, could we say remain?
Remain.
Or, thank you.
You got that, Jim?
I got it.
We have a motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you very much.
Proposed?
Aye. Or nay?
Again, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Trax Farms subdivision plan number five.
As you may recall, the Planning Commission first considered this matter at the August 8th meeting. Request was tabled to allow the applicant to correct technical deficiencies and to reach a resolution regarding potential right-of-way dedication to the township. Briefly, as a reminder, the property is located in the eastern part of the township along the border with Union Township. It is comprised of three separate parcels, the southern of which comprises the bulk of the property. The applicant proposes the transfer of a small sliver of land from existing lot one and the portion of existing lot three located north of Sugar Camp Road to existing lot two, as shown on the screen. The newly created lot is currently proposed to be 10.1 acres in area. The applicant has submitted a revised plan that addresses the outstanding technical issues. However, does not show a dedication of right-of-way at Sugar Camp Road to the township. It is the township's position, the plan as presented cannot be approved without at least a 50-foot dedicated right-of-way being shown. The applicant has requested a modification from council to receive relief from this requirement. However, is also the township's position that even if the applicant receives the requested modification, at least a 33-foot dedicated right-of-way is required to be shown on the plan per state regulations. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission take one of the four following courses of action. Either table the plan to allow for council to take action on the modification request, make a recommendation to council regarding the modification request, and table the plan to allow council to take action. Make a recommendation to council regarding the modification request, and also make a recommendation to council that the plan be approved. Recommend council approve the plan only, with no recommendation being made regarding the modification request. However, if the Planning Commission does include a recommendation for the plan to be approved, it is recommended that be subject at minimum to the applicant receiving approval for the modification request, and that a minimum 33-foot dedicated right-of-way be shown per state requirements. It's worth noting, the Planning Commission can defer making a recommendation on the plan until next month without exceeding any time requirements.
Who's the only from the applicant?
Hi, I'm Shane Slichter, representing the Trax family, Shane Slichter. And I, you know, I agree with everything that has been said. We are asking for a modification to, to back off the 50-foot requirement for the right-of-way. We are okay with the 33-foot requirement. That, that would be fine, that would be perfectly acceptable to us, but we feel that the 50-foot requirement could be premature. If, if there's a future subdivision that involves the abutting land or, or something like that, you know, I'm not saying that that's in the works or anything, but if there is a future subdivision, at that time, you know, we could address the 50-foot right-of-way requirement, but we view it as premature at this time, and therefore, we're asking for a modification to, to allow that 33-foot right-of-way.
I don't have a copy of the modification in our packet.
I received it this week, just the other day.
Did it meet the criteria and outlined, you know, as far as modifications go? There's criteria for each modification. Did it meet--
It was just the request, we're forwarding it to council.
So when will it be considered by council?
Either, September 30th is the next meeting, correct? Likely at the September 30th meeting.
If it doesn't happen then, will the next time be?
Not till the first meeting in October, which would still be before your meeting in October.
Before the October 10th meeting, right?
Correct.
My concern is without having that, that modification, I don't know how you would make any recommendation.
It's my understanding that any modification should provide justification and rationale as to why the modification is needed, not to the level of variance, but it's, it's a modification that talks about, you know, impacts to the neighborhood and so on, so forth. That's my understanding.
Real quick, I'd like to just point out, I misspoke earlier. The first meeting in October isn't until after your meeting in October.
There's one chance?
So, yeah.
September 30th.
If it does, yeah.
For council. And Rock, the criteria are pretty cut and dry, right? It's, you meet these conditions, yes, you do not--
I'm just concerned you don't have this to track us.
I know, agree. Oh, yeah, agree.
Yeah. I'm not, anyways.
We're, we're pulling it up right now.
What's the rationale for the modification?
The rationale is that, you know, no new land development is being proposed in terms of the, the right-of-way. If and when a subdivision and land development plan is ever submitted for the abutting parcel, then this can be, this 50-foot right-of-way requirement can be addressed at that time.
So are you only asking, I'm trying, so you're asking for it in order to do the subdivision, but that if anything is actually, if anything is, they have us to use in any way.
Right.
Then you're not making an argument that whatever would be approved now would carry over?
Right, exactly. We're not asking for the 33-foot right-of-way to be permanent, we're just asking for it to be for now, because it's premature for that 50-foot right-of-way requirement.
Okay. So it's like a temporary, or a?
Could you?
Control scroll.
And this is the one that you're doing, the subdivision, I apologize about the number one, because in order, do you need properties, do you need all the clean green requirements?
That's my understanding, yes.
That's what this is.
That's our understanding as well.
And isn't that what's presented, I don't think it was you last month.
It was, I'm sort of pinch hitting for a number of folks.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So if I look scared, that's probably.
Right, right, right. So my, my understanding is, the whole reason for this, and just correct me if I'm, because again, I don't work here last month, is that they need to kind of re-subdivide, because right now, they would not be, they would not be compliant with what Trax needs, in order to meet all the clean, clean and green requirements for taxes, for whatever it would be. And right now, Trax is potentially not compliant with that.
Correct.
Okay, and so you need, you need to have the subdivision.
We're sort of moving property lines around, yeah, exactly.
You need to move the lines around, in order to remain or become compliant, I don't know if there's a distinction for, with the difference, not for the purposes of a subdivision.
Correct.
Okay, and what you're saying is, is that you're only asking?
For, basically.
For relief in order to push the subdivision through.
Exactly. That's the exact word I was going to say, we're looking for relief from that 50-foot requirement. Instead, we're perfectly fine with the 33-foot requirement.
Okay. Can we go back to the plan, please? Sorry to be laborious on this topic. Could you zoom in on the right-of-way we're speaking of, precisely?
Maybe better bring up the actual plan?
Whatever shows it more precisely.
I think the actual plan, different slide. That's a good point.
Which part are you looking to see?
Just the actual, where the right-of-way, where we're asking for the modification, I think I know where it is.
Right in here, right now, what it's showing, this red dash line is the center line of that road.
Sugar Camp?
Sugar Camp, and you can see the little bit of a dash line here, that blue dash, one side of the 33-foot, and this right here is the other side of the 33-foot, but it's just showed as really others have prescribed easement, at the moment.
And with the subdivision, the code requires that this 50-foot be provided?
Yes.
Okay.
Even if there's no new development happening?
Correct.
Correct. So it's tied to the subdivision, not a land development?
Correct.
Correct. Okay. And they're doing a subdivision?
Correct.
Maybe I'm tipping my cards.
No, I'm with you.
I'm not sure that, what I would, what I'm concerned about is granting a modification, and then a subdivision, or then a land development come through, and that's an existing 33-foot right-of-way, which somehow, we're not required to dedicate or improve, because this is the mechanism to obtain that, I believe.
But could we make it, the question being, could we make it temporary for purposes only of the subdivision, and then say if a, if a land development proposal is filed or applied for, that, can we make it specific that it would not apply to that, and then they would still be subject to?
Given the zoning district that, that's in, it's low-density residential development, which means any future development is more than likely going to include a subdivision, obviously into a smaller set of subdivision slash land development, so that would be another point where we can ask for that 50-foot right-of-way. The only thing I would like to see is that we note on the plans, that if such occurs, that they would be willing to then give us the 50-foot right-of-way, just to make sure.
And maybe not even just willing, but that understood that it would be required.
That it's understood that it would be a requirement, yes.
Right.
That'd be a great way of putting it.
Okay, so not, so there is a way to, there's a way to make a recommendation, that it be permitted if you wanted to, but that it is solely for subdivision purposes, not applied to any land use application, and any land use application would require a 50-foot setback. Is that, is that right, or am I wrong?
I would say any land development subdivision, future subdivision application would require us, we would require.
Yeah, both, okay.
So what if the new development didn't require a subdivision at that time? So there was no further subdivision, so therefore, no opportunity to address this? Is that a possible outcome, even though it's remote?
I don't see that happening.
I think it's a key point.
I think the modification's simply saying, because we don't want to. I mean, that's basically what we're saying, there's no real.
But the ordinance is based upon a subdivision, right?
Sure, yeah.
So if they don't, if they don't do a subdivision, then technically, there's no ordinance for any of the modifications.
Would they need any other stuff, so would they need an application, even if they're not applying to the application?
Right.
Yeah.
I think my, my point is, if, if they want to develop in the future, and they don't have subdivision leading into that, there is no ordinance recourse for us to require the 50-foot.
Is that true? Is that right?
The ordinance requires the 50-foot right-of-way for all the connector roads.
Subdivision or land development.
Or land development.
Yeah.
So what we had said before was that it was based upon the subdivision? So is it based upon the subdivision, or is it based upon development?
There's no development occurring, this is just a subdivision.
No, no, you're saying in the future.
Understood that, Jim.
Okay.
That's not my question, my question is, in the future, if they have a new land development, would they then be required to request a modification off of the 50 feet?
I believe so.
So the 33 gets retired, and it's now subject to a 50.
Right. And there is my say, I believe, we do have a weird stipulation in our ordinance, that anything that, basically a site plan, like you'll see a little bit later next, if it was something that we considered a site plan, we would actually not be able to require that 50-foot right-of-way, but if it's a land development plan, then we can. The irony, where the confusion is, is that a land development plan often is very synonymous with a site plan. So more than likely, we would be able to require that 50-foot as a land development plan, because in all instances, in my mind, in my interpretation, the ordinance would say that any future development on this site is going to either be a land development or a subdivision, and therefore, subject to this requirement.
And all modifications that are granted can have conditions, correct? You can put conditions on modifications.
I believe so.
Right, so just like we do with other recommendations, at least that we make, and then with the council, and then somebody appeals, what they appeals, or if they don't, they don't, right?
And then council can always change them as well.
Right, and so I guess my question is, could the language be a little, just so that it's not so tight 50-foot, that, that any future site plan, development, subdivision must comply with the then-existing rules and regulations of the township, rather than using the number 50, just whatever may it be at that time? I'm trying to look for different ways.
Modification expires with the new land development, maybe?
I think ultimately, what we want is, we're not granting this, you know, forever, we're granting this just for the purposes of this subdivision. If there's anything that happens in the future, we want it to be required, to go back. I think that's all we're kind of trying to.
Back to what our requirement is for right-of-way at that time.
Yeah.
Right, and I will point out that our request that Keith Higgins, our surveyor, submitted to, to the council was, it actually says that, too. It says, if and when a subdivision and land development plan is ever submitted in the future, this provision can be addressed at that time.
Well, yeah, it's to be addressed, but we're not essentially agreeing to provide it upon any submission. I'm just looking typically, not like a variance, but it's a hardship, there's, what's the rationale? It just feels like it's, well, we don't want to do that at this time. I understand that, I just don't know if that's justification for agreeing to a modification to the plan, as set forward.
Maybe you could go back, and then to the best you can, explain that, or is the modification needed, or is it just too onerous?
We feel it's too onerous, because again, what we're really doing is just sort of like changing boundary lines for clean and green purposes, you know, that type of thing. And to, all of a sudden, the, I believe the, correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, but I believe the existing right-of-way is 33 feet, so the fact that we're just sort of moving boundaries, we feel is, it's onerous to trigger that 50-foot requirement. There's a, there's a prescriptive easement, there's no right-of-way right now.
And how does that impact?
We're looking for an actual.
Actual dedicated right-of-way.
And there's a reason that this is predicated on subdivision. So in reality, if we're following the letter, as Rockman kind of said, you know, it isn't so much, hey, you don't want to do this, it's either you can or you cannot. So maybe that's something.
Yeah, I can just say that the lots are different, you know, modifications and variance are green, and, you know, not as of course, but they're green, and even though that's required, it's, I guess, my, my, just look on this, I'd like Trax to be able to do what they need to do, in order to keep their status and keep it clean and green, so I'm just looking to see if there's a way to, if the modification would not have any import right now, just making sure it allows them to do what they need to do or want to do, without impacting future decisions or future developments, you know, that may come into the township, and giving us the right to, giving the township the right to enforce existing setbacks, boundaries, requirements, and not be tied to this decision, but also not impacting their ability to do what they need to do with the land. That's what I'm kind of trying to find a way to do.
Does the 50-foot right-of-way not, making it impossible to meet the clean and green standard, I'm not that familiar with it.
Honestly, I don't know the answer to that. I'm not going to sit here and lie and say yes. I would love to say yes, but I'm not going to, I don't know.
I believe the answer is yes.
So we've been led to?
That's what we've been led to believe, let me put it that way.
And do you have any reason to believe that's not accurate, any, any information, anything that would make you think that that's not accurate?
Essentially, the way cleaning green works is you have to have at least 10 acres.
Right.
And I believe if they take too much right-of-way, then they could drop below that 10 acres.
And Jim, that, that conports to me with what was presented here last, I mean, I know that last month was that they needed to do some more work, but the concern was they were just short of the 10 acres, and so they needed to make some modifications, but the issue is getting them to the 10 acres, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Aside from tabling it, if we make a recommendation, really, council has the final decision on whether to approve the modification request or not.
Right. Yeah, you, you have the option to provide a recommendation on modification, you're not, you do not have to buy a recommendation on the modification, council has the ultimate authority.
We just make a recommendation to move it to council.
Or you, or you could decline to make a recommendation.
So we can either make a recommendation on the modification, or not, and then we have to recommend, or table, or request a tabling from the applicant regarding the subdivision plan. So there's two motions, you can do it in one, then you can do it in two.
But if we table it, nothing's going to change.
Nothing's going to change.
So.
I actually, it pushes them up against some deadlines, so I don't know whether it benefits table.
I agree with that.
But if we do table, it gives council the opportunity to review the modification.
But they can still do that when it comes to.
They wouldn't even go to.
You can do, they could do it in the same meeting, but we would just put the modification before.
I guess it would be us making our recommendation for the applicant.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear you, John.
No, it's, sorry, chatting.
I understand.
Any other comments from the audience? So this is a recommendation to council, there is a modification involved, and there is also a plan for subdivision, Trax Farms subdivision number five. Do we have a motion, or do we need further discussion from the commissioners?
I mean, I can make a recommendation, I can make a, make a motion, I don't know if you're standing on it. I'll move it a little later, and we'll wait there, while somebody else wants to make the motion.
Did you want to take a shot at it?
Yeah, I'll see where it goes. I will make a recommendation to council to approve the modification request by Trax Farms subdivision plan number five, to grant their modification request with the express agreement and acknowledgement, that the modification request will only apply to the current subdivision plan number five, and if and when, or to the extent that Trax Farms submits another site plan subdivision, or land development application or plan, that Trax Farms would be subject to the right-of-way requirements and other requirements set forth in the ordinance, without regard to the current approval.
That are in effect at that time.
In effect at that time. Thank you.
I'll second. Did you get that?
I got it, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye. So we're split.
Ooh.
It's fun, slick chess. I'm not sure the protocol here would be quite canny.
I think that's just the recommendation.
But I think we just, yeah, I think we just say we split 2-2 on the recommendation for the approval of the modification.
Yeah.
So it just moves it to council.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Regarding subdivision plan number five, do we have a motion on the subdivision absent of the modification?
So I would make a recommendation that if the modification request is approved by council, then I would recommend approval of the subdivision plan number five. I don't have objections to the plan itself.
What if they don't approve the modification?
But that, I mean, that's just our recommendation, we're recommending that if they, if they approve the modification, then they approve the plan, because they can't approve the plan without the modification. So if they don't approve the modification.
This would be a condition on the plan, so it could not be approved without the modification first being approved.
So then, we don't need a, we don't need a contrary, because if they don't approve the modification, then there's any possibility of a recommendation.
Doesn't that mean they can't approve it with the 50-foot right-of-way? Is that okay?
I mean, they could do whatever they want, regardless of what we recommend, but I'm just saying, from the standpoint of the motion, I'm saying that if you approve the modification request, then you approve, then we recommend approval of the, of the subdivision plan itself, that since it requires the first, if you don't get past the first, you never get to the second.
And it wouldn't circle back to us, it would end with council's next, whenever they.
Yes, council will take the final action.
Right. Done. It doesn't come back to us for another.
Correct. All right, so we have a motion to approve, subject to the approval of the modification by council.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
2-2.
2-2, 2-2. Good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
Brings us to new business, Valleybrook Country Club Racket Club.
Yes, that'll be me here, if I can figure out how to get this working. Okay, now this is a little bit different, this is a application for site plan approval. This was submitted to us back at the end of July, and we've gone through a couple rounds of comments here, and what we have is an application on a 111-acre tract of land, located at the end of Hidden Valley Road, where the, uh, Valleybrook Country Club is located. They're looking to do a project on approximately one acre, give or take, for relocation of the bracket, or, relocation of their courts. The project area is located right at the entrance to the country club, and it is located on an area that is currently used as a storage area, and it's basically, at the moment, pretty much a gravel pad and/or lot. In terms of the proposed development, again, just roughly a little bit over an acre, once you look at the limited disturbance, and what we see here is we have, see the addition of eight new courts, four on the left, four on the right, with a area in the center that would have a roughly 500-square-foot building, I believe it's for storage and for use of employees, the applicant probably can probably explain more about what the usage of that. There's also some outdoor amenities in here, located right here, looks like your seating area or fire pit. The parking for the site will be provided at an existing lot located to the west here, it's roughly 400 feet from the development site. Pedestrians will access the courts along a sidewalk here that runs along Hidden Valley Road. The other thing I'll point out that's unique to this site is, Hidden Valley Drive is actually a public street, up until it meets the property line here. Couple other additional items to note on the, on the proposed development, there will be some new landscaping and some old landscaping removed, most of the landscaping being removed is located on the north side here, that just has to do with the fact that the courts will be encroaching it on those plant material. And then new plant material will be planted along the southern side here, which will also provide somewhat of a buffer from Hidden Valley Drive as you come down the hill here. Some additional grading will be required on-site, mostly just to the south here, and some of that grading will also include a couple retaining walls. Each of those retaining walls is less than four feet in height, and there's no stormwater management facilities proposed, primarily due to the fact that it is essentially a very minor increase in purview coverage from what is there existing. In terms of looking at how this plays out against our ordinances, for the most part, it does meet all of our ordinances, I will note there's one existing non-conformity on-site, and that has to do with the lot frontage. Right now, as I noted, the road ends at the property line, so it only has 33 feet of lot frontage, typically lots require more, but this is an existing non-conformity, so it's really not an issue for this development. Lighting was an issue that we had outstanding for this plan, however, we did receive on Monday or Tuesday, a new lighting plan, code of metrics, and based on review of that, it does meet the requirements of our lighting. based on review of that, it does meet the requirements of our lighting ordinance. So with that said, staff is recommending approval of the plan, and that the approval of the plan be based on these three conditions here. One, we received notice of review and receipt from the Washington County Planning Commission. I do know they have received, or at least applications been made to them. We should be getting a letter from them shortly. Also, the country club has been in talks with the fire chief, as well as the water company regarding potential water lines and hydrants, so we'd just like to see a note on the plan placed, that once those talks are concluded and everything's worked out in terms of water service, that, that there will be a location for a fire hydrant that is worked out with the fire chief. And then lastly is a requirement for a site plan improvement agreement. This is pretty common with most site plans. All it says is it's an agreement between the developer and township, saying that they will develop the land in accordance with the, with the approved land development, or site plan, I should say. So with that, again, we're recommending approval. I know the applicant is here, if they'd like to make a presentation, certainly have them come up, otherwise we could take questions. It's up to you guys how you want to approve it. And again, I'll point out, this is for approval, not for recommendation.
This is for approval. Understood. I mean, it seems pretty straightforward. I see that Leonard Smith Solar Ray Engineering reviewed it, and Mr. Wingrove noted that it's in compliance with everything. I'm happy to see that the lighting was taken care of. That was actually going to be one of my significant questions, so fantastic that you know it goes there. Does the applicant have anything else to add?
Any questions? I have.
What's the, the lighting? Who, who would be impacted by the lighting? There's no residential...
It's a code requirement at the property line.
Okay. Is this right across from the swimming pool?
It is, yes.
Would you mind coming up, sir? Just, you guys. Your name?
Good evening, everybody. I'm Brandon Miles, here on behalf of Valley Brook Country Club, but we're acting as the owner's rep for them. So yes, sir, it is directly across from the pool. It's their current groundskeeping facilities right now. They had sand...
It's at the end of the driving range, I think.
It is. Yes, sir. Yes, sir, exactly.
We actually have an aerial of the golf course there, which may help kind of orient you. This is the entrance into the country club right here. As you come down the hill, this is where the proposed area is. The driving range, I believe, is right here, and that is right there.
From a lighting perspective, it's kind of a moot point. It's more of that right, that right-of-way, that it's a code requirement, so it's good though. We don't want to just be tossed out of there. Any commissioner comments? You have a motion?
I'll make a motion that the Valley Brook Country Club Racket Club site plan be approved and subject to, what was it?
Through three.
Three conditions or recommendations that were on the screen.
There you go. I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Thank you, everybody. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Brings us to our last topic, update on, from planning.
No, we have...
No, one more.
Oh, sorry about that.
The most exciting part.
This is the subdivision land development and zoning ordinance amendment.
So this is really kind of a continuation of our, of the discussion that we had on August 19th, the joint workshop with council. At that meeting, we had presented two different seldo and subdivision land development ordinance and zoning ordinance amendments, one for the processing of applications, and the other for construction design specifications related to driveways and streets. So what you see before you is actually those same regulations, however, they were combined into one document, and a handful of grammatical and editorial changes have been made to those. So what we're looking for tonight is possibly a recommendation from planning commission regarding council setting in advertising and potentially adopting the ordinance. I do have a couple slides I can go through that talks about some of the changes, so we can get, so if there's any specific questions, we can go through that. So in regards to the ordinance itself, as I noted, it's two ordinances combined, so the first part of the ordinance, which I believe is section one and section two, talk about the plan application process, and this has to do with subdivisions, land developments, and site plans. Subdivision land developments are handled under chapter 385 regulations ourselves, and then site plans are handled under chapter 440 zoning. So with our current regulations, what we've noticed, even though they generally follow the MPC Municipalities Planning Code, we have noticed some issues and/or missed opportunities in terms of things that we could be doing either better or just need cleanup. First and foremost, there is in our ordinance an informal process for pre-application. Someone can come in, either the staff or to, to planning commission or council, and present something, and nothing's binding, and then, of course, we have the formal process, which is what you see here typically. However, it's hard to distinguish between those and the existing code itself, so we drafted the ordinance in a manner that actually set up a process for both the informal pre-application-slash-sketch plan process, as well as then the preliminary and final plan process that we're so familiar with. In addition to that, one of the things our ordinance seems to have lacked is dealing with applications that are incomplete. We oftentimes get applications, the really almost partial applications, and ordinance doesn't speak to what we require, so that we can do our jobs and review it appropriately at the time of submission, so the ordinance attempts to make those changes. Also, in regards to reviewing applications, the way the ordinance is set up, it doesn't really differentiate between whether it's a large plan or a small plan. It's always the same process, one-size-fits-all, so we're attempting to maybe make some changes to, for the smaller, minor plans, to make them go through the process a little simpler, a little bit easier. And also, our ordinance doesn't, at the moment, have any requirements on how time extensions are handled or who handles them. And lastly, through the years, our ordinance has been amended numerous times, and, and really has started to become kind of unorganized and disjointed, so we're looking to kind of create a better flow to the ordinance and make it a little bit more easy to read and more intuitive. So again, a lot of the ordinance language is still carrying over from the existing codes. We have just proposed a handful of notable changes, which is what I kind of like to go through here. So again, as I noticed, we had, noted before, we do have a pre-application process. Now we're looking to make it actual requirements as to what you may do. It's an optional process, but it's highly recommended, but we have all the steps worked out in the ordinance as to what you need to provide to us, so that we can go through that. On the flip side, we also have the steps set aside for how you go through a formal process, and again, that is just to make sure that there's that clear distinction between what is formal and what is informal, and that comes really into play when it comes time for following deadlines. In regards to the application itself, when it's submitted to the township, one of the things we need to make sure is done is make sure that it's a complete application. That makes it easier for us as staff to review, as well as ensures that we then have all the correct information to provide to either planning commission and/or council. So one of the first things we do is we make sure that they submit it in a timely fashion. We are requiring now that they provide the submission at least 29 days ahead of the planning commission meeting. That gives us 29 days to review it. Currently, it's only seven days. We'd also note that if you're going to resubmit anything, that it has to be, give us seven days to review, so that they're not submitting anything, say, the week of the meeting, like we so often see. And any other submissions that are submitted, such as ones that go to council, or if we table stuff and it comes back to us, we'd still like at least 14 days prior to the meeting to see that, because what that does is that allows staff some time to actually review that resubmission and provide comments to you guys or to council. And in terms of the content of the application, this is probably the biggest change, one of the more important changes, is that we have a list of items that need to be submitted to us at the time of submission, anywhere from stormwater plans and traffic impact studies to simple stuff like the fee and the application itself. These are very important things that sometimes we don't get, especially the application, because that has the date as to when it's submitted, which then also then applies to when we actually start the deadline. The other item that I'll note with this is that there is a process for when we notify the applicant that the application is actually complete, and we're required to do that within five business days of receipt, and that application will then also note to them, or that notice will notify the property owner, the applicant, exactly when they will be on the planning commission, and when the deadlines are, and when we've received everything. A lot of that is just to make sure it is in writing.
And it'll just be almost like a form, and you're filling out dates?
Pretty much. It's a, it's a one-paragraph notice. But, but again, a lot of it is to make sure it's in writing, so that we don't end up a situation where we've had in the past where there's confusion as to when the deadline actually starts. In regards to minor plans, we're looking at establishing a minor plan process, and what the, what we would consider minor plans would be any subdivision, that is, three lots or less, and those subdivisions would be ones that have no public improvements, in other words, no new streets, no new stormwater, it's just, for, for example, Trax would be an example. Not a great example, because of the whole thing with the modification, but if they had the right-of-way in there, that'd be a great example.
So not to interrupt, just, so in this case, were they wanting to do this modification, would that fall under a minor?
It would not, because they're asking for the modification.
Got it.
And that's one of the items we'll talk a little bit in a second here, because the other thing that can be a minor plan is a land development plan, and that would be anything that consists of a, I believe it's a 5% increase in building area, up to 5,000 square feet. So you have an existing building, you can expand it up to 5%, and you can only increase the square footage of the impertuse area by 1,000 square feet, so there's minimal impacts to what you currently have. We would review it in-house as staff.
But that's no change of use or anything like that?
Correct.
Expansion?
It's just an expansion. You know, you have a shopping center, they're looking to put in a little outdoor area for selling stuff.
So would the racquetball one have complied, been part of that? No, it's too big, right?
I think that's too big.
I'm just thinking about what you would want it to be in there, because that would seem relatively straightforward, but it would just be too large.
I think it'd be too large.
Right.
And the other item, in order to be considered a minor plan, since this gets to the question before about modifications, is that it has to be a permitted use. It has to contain no new public infrastructure, as I noted, and it cannot be seeking an ordinance or an ordinance modification, so it's a fairly straightforward plan.
Should that be modification or variance?
Correct, or, and/or.
Okay.
A good example would maybe be the Starbucks, where they moved their drive-up window, I forget how many feet, but just...
That probably would have qualified, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Some of those simple consolidation plans, like I think the Dugan was last month, those, that would have been considered a minor plan.
How many do you see property owners who just maybe want to subdivide, add another lot for, and the plan of giving it to their kid or whatever, and you're seeing where they're just adding a, a simple subdivision?
Or remove a lot line for two adjacent.
And we see a lot of those.
Right.
This wouldn't preclude you from asking for additional studies, like in this case the Starbucks, you know, queuing analysis or something like that.
You still follow the same process?
Right.
In fact, I have a slide on the process, but you go through the same process, the only thing you don't do is go to either you guys or council.
Understood.
And the other thing, as I noted earlier, is that we do now have a proposal for how we will handle time extensions. The ordinance was largely silent on that matter, so the way we place it is any type of, for lack of a better term, minor extension, time extension, and as you know, we have 90 days to approve stuff. If it's going to be 30 days or less, that can be done by the township manager. The idea here is that the, if you get, you know, we just can't quite make the next meeting, the township manager can authorize an extension, in that case, to make that next meeting. And if it's a plan that's only decided by the planning commission, such as a land development plan, that would be handled by the planning commission, to be able to make the decision on a time extension, and then for a subdivision, those things that are decided upon by council, that would then be a time extension granted by them. And, and the other thing I will note, it's not on the slide here, is that instead of calling what we call site plans, typically nowadays will now be called land development plans, and that's in conformance with the Municipalities Planning Code definitions for land development plans and subdivisions.
Can I ask just when the last time this process had been reviewed or updated? Are we going back?
Honestly, I don't really know. It's before my time, but that was nine minutes ago.
Can I just back up just for one quick question?
Absolutely.
I actually don't want to get too far, because I don't want to forget my, my question. When you put in the, which I think makes total sense, the deadlines for submissions in advance of, in advance of coming before the hearing, obviously, I represented developers in the past on this program, so I guess, are you going to give yourself any opportunity to waive those deadlines? Let's say, you know, sometimes, you know, everything is compliant on something they gave you, but then some, just one thing comes in at the last minute, but if it's not a big deal to you, I would just, you just might want to consider providing yourself with the opportunity to waive the, you know, waive the deadline, because let's say they're off by an hour or two, or let's say it's just it was one small issue, and you don't want to have to push the whole thing, you know, to the next month because of that. I'm pretty sure you could give yourself the opportunity to waive that deadline, that it be, you know, waived solely at the discretion of staff.
And I'm just looking to see if we have something like that.
I was thinking about the ones where you said you want seven, not really the 14 and the 29 days, but really those, that's seven days, so that nothing's coming in the week of, or it's coming in seven days ahead of time. I just know a lot of times there's little things that are missing.
I mean, what I would say is...
Maybe waiting for the, you know, for one of their people, they get it to them.
What I would say is we don't have it in here, but that's something we would like to see, and we're still looking forward to move, push this forward. We could add that as a recommendation that...
Just an idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, just an idea to give you guys more flexibility as well.
Just bear with me while I write some notes here.
Yeah, no, didn't mean to throw you off.
No, no, it's all right. And the last item I have is in regards to the process, which I, I believe I showed this at the August 19th meeting, but this is our general process that we have. In fact, this may end up actually in the code itself, just to give people an idea visually what, what we require. So again, starting at the far left there, you have the optional pre-application conference or sketch plan that can be with the planning commission or council, or it could just be with staff. It is highly recommended, because at this point, even though none of the comments are binding on the plan, it's a great way for the developer to kind of get an idea of what is going to be the issues, where are the issues, and what they can do to possibly fix those and address those, so that when you do come through the actual submission time, right, maybe you can actually move your application through a little quicker. So then, once you make the actual official submission, 29 days out, we will then do our application completeness review. It's a five-day review. Typically, it's actually done within usually one business day. Really just depends on how much, if everyone's available. It's more so than anything, because it's a relatively quick thing to do for us. It's, it takes more, the complicated plans, it takes 15 minutes to go through and to make sure they have everything. Simple plans, it's, it's five minutes. And then we'll start our initial plan review, and we may do a second round of reviews, depending on the complexity of the plan itself. Then after those 29 days are up, it goes to planning commission. That could be one or more meetings, depending on, again, the complexity of the plan itself, and then it will go to council meeting. And all this is supposed to be done within 90 days, but of course, some things take longer, and if that is the case, then we just need a time extension, which we allow for in the ordinance and have some regulations regarding that. And then with, once that happens, then staff has 15 days to get a letter out to the applicant stating either the approval, approval of conditions, or denial, and I'll just note that we need to have specific reasons for the denial, so that has to happen within 15 days.
Is that just in calendar or business calendar?
Uh, you know, I'd have to look at the MPC, but it's very specific.
I'm pretty sure it's calendar.
I'm pretty sure it's all calendar.
So that's the application process. We did make some...
Do you want comments on each one of these as we go?
You know what, let's do that. I think that would probably actually be easier.
So I, I think if we go back to your process, I, I think this process, process is fantastic. I don't feel that the commission, and I can't speak for council, is overburdened by plans. I would like, it's my opinion that I'd like to see this implemented, and, you know, pretty much just as you have it. My only comment would be for minor plans, I'd like to hold, I'd like to hold off on implementing that element of it, simply because I don't think that this commission's overburdened yet, and allowing those to come through at this point, it seems reasonable to me. If we, in the future, if we're overburdened, we're not getting the community's work done in time based upon this process, you know, I'd, I'd support, you know, holding 38, or reserving 385-24, reserving that section and popping this in later, later date. That's my opinion, based upon, in other words, seeing this go through, I think this is going to clean up a lot of the questions we have, and we're going to have a much more streamlined process, such that everything goes through as it would be, rather than snapping off even those minor plans at this point. I say that so that there's not things that quote-unquote would slip through the cracks, not necessarily from a staff perspective, but just from... not necessarily from a staff perspective, but just from, you know, the community having, you know, having appointed council and council appointing us, just so we go through that process. If we are overburdened, then I would support the minor plan adjustment.
So just to recap, you support everything but the minor plan at the moment?
Correct. At the moment, correct.
So I'd also make the point that if we're going to do the piece of the application process where if it's incomplete, it gets rejected, the exercise coming and tabling and coming and tabling probably goes away, so the burden becomes even less, unless I would say. So I agree with that. That's a protocol.
I guess I wouldn't be opposed to, I don't have any opposition to identifying one that's being minor and one that's being major, if you want to also just have different criteria for what you can let happen. So maybe you get it, it's a minor plan, you don't need it 29 days ahead, you don't need it 14, you don't need to not get anything seven. But from the standpoint of it coming before Planning Commission and publicize, I think I probably agree there. But I do think there are probably benefits to having different subsets of what a major plan and what a minor plan is, and then recognizing what you need for a major plan versus what you need for a minor plan, even if, even still going to come here, because you guys are moving it through the process and allowing that process to be easier on you.
So we make this stuff, classifying them, which is important. And then at some point in time, we want to put in the piece where we don't have to see the minor ones. You've already made the change to make the classification, and we know what we wouldn't need to see in the future. I think that's a good suggestion.
And I think they still, they still come to us, but still, maybe some of the requirements don't have to be there that you're requiring for the major. So you don't have somebody that's just coming in with a minor plan, and you're not rejecting them and saying like, oh, go get this, no, this is required as well. We didn't really think about that, but you got to get this piece of paper as well. You give them a little easier, you know, order row to get in front of us, because I think those are the people a lot of times who don't have developers, who don't have, you know, council, things like that. So I think from an upfront standpoint, but I still may, I still probably like to see it come through here.
Perhaps you simply say that if it's a minor subdivision application, staff may waive certain requirements, such as a geotechnical review before a parking lot. We're not going to eat geotech.
Gotcha.
So.
And then you don't have to identify what those are, and then maybe that allows you to actually put more plans in a minor category, potentially, if you can just decide what you want to waive and not want to waive, because if you wanted to make it a broader. Yeah, I mean, I like having the two, so that we know, and you can also then track, we got this many major, we got this many minor, you know, in front of us right now.
So you're thinking that the minor plans would be basically what we said would be minor plans, but they would have to do as many of the reports and the other items that are required?
You're in the engineer's discretion. If you go through there and say, it's a minor land development, it's a parking lot, we don't need to have geotech analysis, great, but then we're good, you know? If that's what the engineer thinks, then I'm good with that, too, because it's fine. It would lighten the burden, you know, on the applicants to make it too onerous to provide all the information, but also would speed things up just, and let things come through, let all the plans come through the community process. I think that's important. We have a very passionate community, I would say. I think the sketch plan process is something that you're going to see be very much leveraged by the development community.
I certainly hope so. In the past places I've worked, we've used it a lot, and it's really been to the benefit of the developer more so than the community, because they come in with a plan, the actual submission time, and it actually has a lot less comments than it normally would.
The only thing I would say, and I didn't, I don't have my glasses to see exactly what's on there, but with respect to the, making sure that the language is correct, just to make sure you're up, let's sort of look at it, that, you know, that these are the minimum requirements in order for the plan, and if it's, if these are not met, you know, it's not going to be rejected, it's that the application will not be deemed filed, right?
Yes.
Because that's what we've had in the past, where trying to get them in under.
They're deemed administratively incomplete.
Right. And so not, will not start, yeah, because I think that's where we've had people just putting them in right before, because they want to get under them then.
Right. Think I'm a coward.
Yeah, exactly.
Was there anything else on the application process?
I think that's.
Okay. Well, that brings us to the second part of the ordinance, which is actually several sections of the ordinance. And that has to do with the streets and driveways. So in chapter 385, we have our regulations regards to streets. We're providing some amendments to those requirements, and those amendments essentially are just updates based on PennDOT's more recent and Ashto's more recent specifications. Some of the items, for example, that we've updated is the horizontal and vertical curvature requirements, stopping distance, intersection spacing. It's all based on either PennDOT or Ashto requirements. We've also revised the street width charts, which talk about design speed, as well as we renamed collector and connector roads to major collector and minor collector. And that has more to do with just confusion as to what's a collector versus a connector. And that's, it's almost more internal than anything for us as staff. And then we have driveways. And those are a little bit different. Those are the, you know, the means of access into a site itself, and that's regulated by chapter 440 or zoning ordinance. And what we're proposing is we just updated the site distance, again, based on PennDOT standards. The probably the biggest change, it has to do with shared driveways or cross-access driveways, that we are now requiring it to apply to all adjoining commercial properties, not just in a specific zoning district. And the other item I'll note is that we also may require the driveway to be installed at a later date if there's no reason to install it at this time. An example would be if you have a large space in between two developments, even though they're adjoining properties, maybe you don't necessarily require that cross-access driveway to be built right away, maybe you require it to be built when the adjoining property is built. And then a couple other minor things that are proposed to be changed, has to do with their definitions. And what we're proposing here is to change these sets of definitions here, so that they're consistent in both the SALDO and zoning ordinance. For example, streets were defined one way in zoning and were defined a different way in chapter 385. Well, now they'll be the same across the board. So that was all the changes I had with regards to the streets and driveways. And you notice there, it's quite a lengthy ordinance. A lot of that has to do with, there's 45 pages of exhibits. Those are just the design specifications for roads and/or driveways. And the other thing is there's a couple miscellaneous items where we change sections of the zoning ordinance that refer to collector, we refer to it now as major collector, connector to minor collector. So that's, those are the changes within the ordinance, the notable changes. Were there any questions in regards to the streets and driveways, or even the other exhibits?
Has TPD reviewed most of them?
TPD is the one who basically drafted this.
Perfect.
Yeah, TPD worked with our engineer on this, and then I'm the one who organized it.
Fantastic. And we still like the hoods on our inlets.
Yeah.
All right.
I know, it's unusual. Although I've noticed other municipalities around here do that as well, with the, by two-minute curve.
Anyone have any comments on the roads and streets? I think it makes, I love that we're consistent between the SALDO and zoning, and I appreciate your time, putting all that together, because it is a Herculean effort to make sure everything is in order. It does make for a lot easier and less confusion in shorter meetings.
So what I'll say, what we're looking for today is either a recommendation to move it forward with, we noted some changes here, or table it, and I can bring it back with those changes in it.
Could we recommend with the changes?
I don't see why not.
I will make a recommendation that the subdivision and land development and zoning ordinance amendments be approved subject to the, or including in the recommendation the comments made by Planning Commission, by the board.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
All right. Nice and easy.
Any staff update?
The only thing I will point out is that Kristin Gullahan, our code enforcement officer, has taken the job with South Strabane as, I believe, the director of planning, would be her new position. So for now, we'll be without a code enforcement officer, and by, without any, those duties fall to other staff, myself, Jim. I just wanted to point that out, and anyone that knows her, she's done a very good job at what she's been doing, and I think she'll do great things for South Strabane Township.
We wish you the best.
Any update on Ted's status?
We were just talking about that earlier. I'm going to ping Paul on that tomorrow.
Anything else? Anything adjourned?